The S R I Scholarship Award, David Bott Off. How are you, sir? The A I C Director, Executive Director.
Right, right.
I've seen your face a few times.
Yeah, well, thank you for the opportunity to be at your commissioner meeting and provide these scholarships. We actually have two scholarships to give out today. I've been doing this for twenty years, so this is the first time we've ever had two scholarship winners from the same high school. I think that's fantastic. They're both here.
Well, we're Dearborn County.
Both, both athletes. So, uh, the first scholarship, uh, I want to present is with actually was Nationwide Retirement Solutions, which, um, we partner with. And, um, the winner, um, is Bree Cleary, she's here, and her father's a judge here in town. And so this is actually a thousand dollar scholarship. We only give one of these out a year, uh, with Nationwide. And so we present five hundred dollars now and then five hundred dollars, uh, in the spring. And so, um, again, attended high school here, uh, it looks like she was on the diving team and, uh, so an athlete, um, also on cheerleading. And, uh, she was a student ambassador and she plans to go to Indiana State. And I think, uh, study of marketing and business strategy and, and business law, of course, carried a four point O in high school. And so, um, just really proud that we're able to do this with Nationwide and, and give money back to the community. So, um, I don't know if we can get a picture with the judge and, uh, his daughter and the commissioners. And I want to recognize Liz Morris, who's been on our board of directors for a number of years, does a great job representing, uh,
She founded the board.
Orange, Orange County, yeah. Does a great job representing the county and, and, uh, Southeast Indiana. So.
Thank you.
Uh, yep. And unfortunately, uh, we could not have a representative here from Nationwide. But again, they just wanted to express their thanks and support for using the deferred cop program.
Okay. Do you want to get a?
Yeah, can we do a picture? Yeah. All right, the, uh, the second winner we have, uh,
Yeah, I know.
Is with, uh, uh, also attended the same high school. Uh, he, he plans on, he played football, he plans on going to Thomas Moore, playing football in, uh, in college as well. It's Carson Pazanka, I think I got that right. And his father worked for the sheriff's office. Um, and again, fantastic student, uh, wrote a great essay, um, for, for the scholarship. And this one, again, with, with S R I, and this is a five hundred dollar scholarship. We give out four of these across the state. And again, very unusual, we have two from the same, from the same high school. So I think that's fantastic and something for Dearborn County, uh, to be proud of. When I read his essay, uh, not just me, but we have a committee who selects these winners. And I noticed, so they had ten exchange students. So I thought that was outstanding that the, uh, the family welcomed, um, exchange students. And they, I think one of his favorite things, he said, all the, all the different foods you got to try with, uh, with all the different exchange students. So I thought that was great. So. But, uh, uh, Zach Hughes with S R I, he'd like to say just a few words.
Morning, everyone. Uh, Zach Hughes from S R I. I just wanted, you know, stop by and congratulate you. Uh, wish you the best of luck. Uh, S R I works with Dearborn County and a number of other counties around the state for, uh, tax sales and sheriff sales. Uh, so we're just thrilled that we're able to help, you know, a little bit with, with your future and, and give back to the, the state of Indiana and Dearborn County. So congratulations and good luck.
I always like to tell story about how we got this started. Zach's grandfather started S R I and he used to send out literally thousands of holiday cards. And, uh, one time he came by and, um, we were talking about what else he could do. And I said, I'm sure everybody appreciates getting the holiday cards in the auditor's office, the treasurer's, the commissioners. And I said, maybe if you redirect that amount of money you're spending on holiday card to the scholarship. And that's what we have ended up doing. That was probably about ten years ago. So I think it, uh, uh, gets a bigger bang for the buck by giving it back, uh, to the community. So. So Carson, congratulations. Again, if we can get a photo, appreciate it.
As a county, it's all right. I'm, I'm your guys.
All right. Uh, I want to thank you for the, the flag display for the bicentennial. That's the best one I've seen around the state. So, uh, glad that you all have kept that.
You have to play it, so.
You guys give them a little ear of the money.
The guy that ran over Bonnie.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
This could be a little bit.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and good luck.
Well, well, thanks again for the opportunity to present today and appreciate all your all's support and, uh, allowing Liz to come up and serve on our board. And, uh, we've got a board meeting next week with a big agenda and, uh, just talking to her about some of the, uh, projections we're looking at doing for the counties on, uh, Central One. So make sure Liz knows that and gets that back to you. So.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is the quick claim deed for three, six, eight, three, seven, zero building.
Uh, yes, so this is a, a quick claim deed to transfer this property to Saint Elizabeth Medical Center Incorporated, nonprofit corporation of Duncan County Commonwealth of Kentucky. This is what I've always called the Thunder Hill Professional Building, um, right, just past the hospital on the right side of the road. Um, it's, and just part of the process of transferring, um, everything over to Saint Elizabeth, um, pursuant to the sale of Dearborn County Hospital or High Point Health. Um, Sue, you have your stuff?
I do.
Okay. Um, and this is one that they were fine to go ahead and get transferred. They didn't believe needed to go through the formal closing process that will do with the main campus. So I just asked for a motion to approve the quick claim deed transferring three sixty-eight, three seventy, Billby Road to Saint Elizabeth Medical Center, Inc.
Okay, any questions about this? Uh, Kevin, motion to approve the quick claim deed for three, six, eight, three, seven, zero building. That is presented by Mr. Bond.
Same move.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, next up, uh, Andrew, quick claim deed for six hundred Wilson Creek, the main hospital cannon.
So this is one, um, like what we did with the apartment parcel. Uh, this is one where the hospital board through its transition committee and, uh, you all as the board of commissioners are transferring this property to the county. So we're, you remember, part of the reason this has taken so long is because the main campus up there was kind of a mess. Some things were in the hospital's name, some things were in the county's name. So we're consolidating everything into the county's name so that when we transfer it all to Saint Elizabeth, it's a lot cleaner. Um, so this is transferring everything up there at the main campus to the county. Um, and so then we'll have the apartment parcel will be in the county's name, which we will keep. And then the main campus will be in the county's name wholly, which will then transfer to Saint Elizabeth at the closing. After this is, um, so this is, um, the deed that goes along with the plat that you approved last meeting. Um, after this is recorded, then we'll report the cross parking easement agreement, which has already been signed and approved. And then the last step will be the closing chair to transfer this parcel to Saint Elizabeth.
Okay. How long we been working on this?
Two thousand nineteen.
We sold, they took over November one, twenty twenty.
So.
Connie, I forgot to date the first page of that first one. All right. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the quick claim deed transferring, um, the main campus at six hundred Wilson Creek to the Dearborn County Board of Commissioners as the grantee.
Okay. Yeah, okay, as, as presented, as presented by Mr. Biden Dusel. I got a so moved. I got a second, second over here and all favor. Motion carries. All right. Now it looks like we have one more we have to deal with here.
Yes. Uh, so this is the Third Amendment to the Community Mental Health Center lease. Uh, I think we spoke about this last time also. The apartment, uh, parcel that we will be keeping is where the Community Mental Health Center lease, or apartment building is located. Uh, we leased that land to the Community Mental Health Center. Um, that lease currently runs through two thousand one hundred and three, twenty-one oh three, in case anybody's curious. And so this Third Amendment will update for the purposes of the lease agreement, uh, Community Mental Health Center's name. They, they did do a rebrand a few years ago and also will update the description of the parcel since we now have this, um, apartment parcel as its own separate thing. And I do have that Third Amendment here. It has been signed by Greg Duncan already on behalf of Community Mental Health Center.
Right. And that's a dollar a year.
Dollar a year until twenty-one oh three.
I told him, I, I, I wanted to make sure that we collected that every year.
So I just, uh, um, asked for a motion to approve the Third Amendment to the C M H C list.
Doing, uh, most to approve the, uh, Third Amendment to the, uh, Community Mental Health Lease.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Mr. Listerman, County Engineer, you're up.
Todd Listerman, County Engineer, first agenda is a review of the deaf child area policy. We have a policy for all our signs in Dearborn County as it relates to the M U T C D. Uh, however, uh, the M U T C D does not cover anything related to, uh, deaf child. Okay. So in two thousand ten, uh, we had a request for a deaf child area sign to be placed along one of the county roads, uh, uh, warn drivers that there's a deaf child that lives here. So they would be alerted to the fact that if the child was near the road and they blew their horn, the child was not going to hear it. So take extra precaution. So at that time, we created a policy that said, uh, that we would erect a sign for deaf child area for a deaf child that was under the age of thirteen, which we felt at that time was a child that was thirteen years old, knew well enough to be aware of his surroundings, uh, uh, that could, uh, where a younger child's not aware of the road or whatever, but at thirteen years old, as a teenager, they would be aware of the situation and be aware around roads would be careful. Uh, basically.
Andy, thirteen, is that? Uh, is there anything?
There's, there's, it's entirely up to you guys. There's no federal regulations or state regulations that deal with this from what I can, what I can find. So it would be whatever your policy is. I think thirteen is the number because that is when a child will become old enough to know that a road is dangerous.
Okay, I didn't know if maybe an older, you know, like fifteen or sixteen or eighteen.
Just at the time, we felt that they were teenager, they were, you know.
Okay, that's your feeling. Then how many signs, one, two?
What, what we do is we will put one at each end, each side of the, uh, resident. So you've traffic going each direction, eastbound or westbound, northbound or southbound. So traffic going each direction would be able to have a sign that would show that this, that the, uh,
Uh, where is this?
Okay, this one will be on Mount, Mount Sinai Road.
Okay.
Uh, basically, as part of the policy, we require that they would give us a medical letter stating that, yes, there was, uh, uh, it was necessary, the child was deaf or extremely hearing impaired, uh, which they have proved. Uh, we got children of ages of one and three. There's actually two children, not just one, uh, at this location. Both have hearing issues. Uh, at the time, it was felt that, uh, the, the policy right now states that the guardians or parents are requesting a sign pay for the cost of the signs post an installation. Okay, at the time, it was thought that if they had skin in the game, you know, if they really was really important to them, they would have some skin in the game to, to help erect the signs because it's outside our normal policy. Uh, again, the signs would come to property of the counties and the signs will be removed when a child reaches the age of thirteen. With that being said, in this location, we've had, I've had, this is the second request I've had in my twenty years as county engineer. And the first one is two thousand ten, we erected the original ones and then this one here in two thousand twenty-five. Now, once the old signs from the old location were taken down, they were still in good shape and we kept them. Okay, for in case we ever had one in the future. So, uh, if we still keep the policy, they have to pay for the installation and cost. The signs would already be provided. They wouldn't have to buy new signs because we already have the signs. They would only have to pay for the post and installation. If that's, if we remain with the policy today, the question is, you know, I, I need to, I figured after fifteen years, new county commissioners, we need to readdress if that's something we still want in the policy. Or we just want to say is we want, we don't need to, we don't feel that part of the policy or any of the policy, the age, is there anything that you want changed so I can get a newer policy adopted? And if.
How much do we charge the first time around?
What's that?
How much do we charge these, the size that were previously put up? What did we charge to have that done?
Whatever the signs cost, okay, whatever the signs would have been to build, what I've got from clean, whoever made more signs. And then I have a fixed fee that I use when I do insurance claims. Like the truck is worth fifty dollars an hour, you got an hour's worth of truck. I, I, the hour manpower, the two people to go out to put the sign up and get an hour's worth of manpower, the two hours, figure that out. That's how I do. So if you, if the charge would be with, if we had the signs already existing, you'd be probably around two hundred and fifty dollars for the actual, the hour truck manpower, the post and everything would be around two hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, if you add the signs in, the signs would be probably seventy-five dollars. I would expect to a hundred dollars apiece. So if it's completely new, it'd be about four fifty in today's dollars. I can't tell you what it was back in two thousand ten.
Okay, how are you going to know when, uh, the, uh, this particular individual is going to turn thirteen?
I have the ages of right now of two and one or two and three.
So we have to track.
I mean, I mean, I mean, I go out, I mean.
You're going to be gone in ten years.
I know. I mean, all the paperwork should still be in the file, deaf child area, blah, 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 but will the, who knows after I leave, will there be three other people between town at a time it gets, you know, ten years from now or twelve years from now?
What's the speed limit on that road?
Thirty-five miles an hour.
Thirty-five, okay. That's off the main drive.
Correct. But it's still, but it's still, I mean, it's thirty-five miles an hour, still a fairly.
Right.
And it's, it's, and the idea was at the time that we felt it was, it was for safety. You know, it, it was a good, even though it's not the M U T C D, we felt at the time it was a policy that, yeah, we can, we, for the safety of those children, we felt it was worthwhile.
Are there any other signs that we put up for other disability? I mean, this is the only.
Right now, I don't have autistic children signs. No, there's nothing. Like I said, this is a second request I've had for a deaf child or anything such as a handicap.
Well, that, that, that brings me to my point. So we're going up to thirteen. At thirteen years old, even if they're deaf, there's a lot of comorbidity with other, uh, medical issues that not only are they deaf, they also have possibly autism, possibly, uh, any other mental disabilities to where, no, they don't know what traffic is. And I'd rather it go up to when they're an adult.
That's fine. I mean, as far as I, as I've been talking to the, the lady, that this, they're just deaf. There's no other.
Right.
And that might be something if we want to look, if we get an autistic child, maybe that's a different policy and a different pol-, you know what I'm saying? Not related to deaf children, but if you have an autistic child. Okay, maybe that's when we go look at the age. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, and I, you know, I just thought it was, it's been so long since we did this policy, that it was something that probably need to be readdressed by the new county commission and how we want to proceed.
Would those particular issues be identified early on or would those?
Oh, yeah, usually they get identified.
So if they just say deaf child, that's probably the only issue they have at this time.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah, usually that, yeah. And, and at least, at least by the early three or four years old, all the, all that comes, ends up.
So maybe we should have a separate policy for something like that.
A separate policy for.
An autistic guy you're talking about with additional.
Initial.
He's the current policy that we, we have in place. And then if we're, if, if they come before us or request something that, let's say deaf child and they have other issues, we could.
Then I would, I would, if it's going to be a deaf child and autistic, I would probably somehow write this separate sign that says autistic slash deaf.
Let's wait till that particular issue comes up and then we'll deal with it at that point.
Now, do you still want, do you still think it's worthwhile to keep the cost that they pay part of it or not? I mean, I, or do we feel that if we want to do it, just go ahead and it's just a minimal cost to go ahead and cover it by the county if we feel it's deemed? That's the other one I want to make sure.
I think we could put it up.
Okay.
Since we have the signs.
Uh, that's what I'm thinking too.
My suggestion would be if the commissioners want to keep what we have here, just get rid of them having to pay the cost, which I think is more.
That's where I'm going.
Reasonable. I think we should have, I think you should have me do it as an ordinance and actually put it in our code of ordinances so that when Todd's not here, I'm not here, whatever, there, it's in the county's code of ordinances and somebody can see it.
So you want to wait until you take a look at that before we move on this or?
Can we put the sign on? I think, I think if you guys want to authorize Todd to go ahead and sign up that fine, I just want to take, I think it would make sense for the future to have it in the code of ordinances so that somebody can see it, find it. Would this sign then fall in that, that ordinance or ruling? I think you could move to have the highway department go ahead and install the sign and waive the cost.
All right.
Make motion to go ahead and install the sign and waive the cost regarding this issue.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
And if you want to let the parents, if something else arises before they turn thirteen that they think it needs to stay, that they need to come back.
Correct.
And let someone know.
Correct, I will.
Okay.
All right, you got, uh, one more issue, Bridge two twelve.
Uh, Bridge two twelve, what I have today is a design contract between Dearborn County and F P B H Gonzalez Company, uh, for the design of Bridge two twelve, which is Crane's Run. Uh, that structure, uh, it's not a bridge as we would think. It's a bridge. It's actually two mul-, old, old multiplates side by side that over time have started to separate, have rusted the bottoms out and needs to be replaced. So, uh, what we have here is the design contract to design the replacement structure for that, uh, bridge. Uh, again, what I'm asking for today is a, a, uh, approval of the contract to be signed by the board of, the board of commissioner or the president of the board of commissioners, because there's only one signature on this contract. Andy has reviewed the contract. There was one minor change and Andy requested to be placed in the contract that has been changed. So Andy is, uh, fine with the contract. It is an amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Questions? Questions?
Other than the new structure is going to be a bridge, or you don't know?
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 it'll, it'll, it'll be a bridge. It's, the, what we'll do is actually put a, a, uh, oh, what I want to say, a full, uh, bridge structure won't be multiplated. The problem with the multiplates is like anything else, you put an obstacle, it's something in the middle. When stuff comes down, it constantly gets caught and doesn't go through. So we'll make it a single span. So everything's free flow under the structure.
Or do I mostly to approve, uh, Bridge two one two, uh, design or frame run road? I don't know where that is. Do you know where that?
No, that, that.
Off of Dan Hook.
Have to look that one.
As presented by, uh, Mr. Uh, Listerman in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, uh, to F P B and H Incorporated.
Seventy-seven, seven hundred.
I know.
On the back page.
Oh, okay, okay. All right.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. My, my thing says seventy-seven thousand. All right, all in favor, right? We all agree?
Yes.
Good. All right. I'm ending just one.
No, there's two. I remember your name.
All right, got it. Down, down to Connie.
Just real quick, uh, had meeting with council yesterday. Additional appropriations, got funding for a couple of bridges to be replaced for next year. Uh, the, uh, Bridge sixty-eight, which is the new deck on Newark Ridge Road, as well as a new bridge on Davidson, which is two twenty-one. Just to give a quick update, uh, we, at one time, we had twenty-one bridges. Uh, we are now down to a total of twelve bridges that are in replacement.
You were twenty-one bridges that needed attention.
Attention.
Now we're down to twelve.
We're down to twelve.
Okay.
Now, last year, we, uh, this year we're working on right now, we're fixing three bridges. Okay, however, with the new inspection in April, we're adding three structures onto the thing. So the number twelve doesn't change. It doesn't go down with the, uh, with the replacements this year. It's just going to go, it's going to remain the same because we've added three structures due to the last inspection. So we are making progress. We've done a lot of improvements, but it's the bridges are a, you had a hundred, uh, bridges in the county uh, that we maintain and, and earned in, uh, under our responsibility. And it's just a never ending cycle. As you, you fix one, just because there's so many, you can't, you know, it's just, it's a never ending cycle. But we have got the number from twenty-one down to twelve.
Well, it's important that we maintain these bridges because we surely don't want to have an accident. So you might want to thank, uh, Liz and.
And the council, which I did yesterday.
Additional money is to be able to be at the level you're at.
Right.
Okay. Right, anything else?
There's no, I think.
Have a great day. Ms. Hayden, you have anything for us?
I just wanted to remind you guys, I had sent you an email that next week, Wednesday, I'll be out all day uh, up in Indianapolis for an ADA and Title Six workshop. Every three years I have to present an ADA transition plan and that's coming up next year. And every year I have to do the Title Six implementation plan, which I will be bringing to you guys next meeting to approve for the following year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Fromhold, do you have claims?
Boys.
Got a motion to approve claims?
Move to approve claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Equivalent storing these up. Hey, roll. Motion to approve payroll.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.
For July fifteenth.
Kevin, motion to approve. The minutes for the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five commissioner meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Fromhold?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Biden Dusel, you have a couple of things for us? Thank you. Mr. Boden Dussel, you have a couple things for us?
Yeah, um, Kevin Haflan is here from Manchester Township, uh, Fire and Rescue. Um, council at their meeting yesterday did approve a supplemental distribution to Manchester, um. Fire and rescue out of the EMS Lit. Uh, so that they could purchase a, a new ambulance unit. They have one that's available in November. Yeah, so they were able to find one because these things have two-year lead times, and they were, they were able to find one that's, uh. So they can actually get a hold of in November.
Right.
So it's an additional, um, distribution out of the EMS Lit in the amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, there is, uh, this came up during the meeting yesterday, there is clawback in there if they, when they, or when they just. Decide that that one needs to be taken out of service. Um, there's parameters in there about what they have to do as far as notifying the county. You know, hopefully another unit's able to use it or something along those lines, so. And then. He's here. Do you have any questions?
Just, just tell us a little bit about the new unit you're gonna have and why it costs a little bit more than some of the others.
Um, well, we started our search about a year ago for a new ambulance. Uh, the one we have is, our mainline unit is a two thousand twelve. It's got, uh, it not used to running as often as we've been running it now lately, uh. Because in the last two years, we've more than doubled our run volume per month. And we started out by going to FDIC, which is a big convention in Indianapolis. And we're looking at the different brands of ambulances that were up there. Uh, and talking to all the manufacturers about how long it would take by the time we ordered one to when we got one. And in those conversations, we talked to the Horton manufacturer, uh, who's one of the oldest ambulance manufacturers in the country. Uh, and happens to be the same, uh, manufacturer of the one we have currently. And they told us of the opportunity to buy the demo unit that they had there at the, uh, convention. Um, we talked to them about how it would be available and how much and everything, and it, um. It met all of our specifications, uh, the main one being for Manchester, being rural. Our ambulance goes off the road a whole lot more often than, say, the ones down here in Aurora and Lawrenceburg. Um, so we had, we wanted to make sure that we had not only just four-wheel drive, but a unit that was built to truly be.
I think most people think that when they call nine-one-one for ambulance, it just pulls up in the house.
Right.
You, you could have one where you could have someone injured in the field.
Correct.
Or, or what have you, and you need to be able to get that bus out there to that person.
Correct. The, in, in twenty twenty-four, we had, uh, two times. Two times in eight months where that ambulance was at least two miles off of a driveway or a road. Um, for razor accidents or ATVs or deer ac- deer hunting accidents. So we wanted to be able to keep doing that. This particular unit, um, versus the one we have now, our, our current unit is a one-ton chassis with our ambulance. This is a one and a half ton chassis, so it's an F five fifty instead of an F three fifty. Um, which allows it to have more power and be able to do a little more than what we can currently, uh, with the unit that we have. Uh, because of that, the chassis itself is almost thirty thousand dollars more than. What a lot of the other ambulances are with the one-ton chassis. Uh, that's a lot of the, the additional cost to this particular unit. Uh, it also, because it was a demo unit, they built it forward-thinking, uh, traffic safety is going to be. Of requiring restraint systems in the back of ambulances. It was supposed to be in twenty-five, but the current administration has pushed it back to what I hear is between twenty-six and twenty-seven. Well, this unit already has that in order to try to, because they wanted to, you know, obviously show everybody that's gonna be buying an ambulance in two years. Or expecting what's coming out. So this unit already has those kind of things as well, additional safety restraints, which is another cost. Uh, that was a little higher than others.
What, what's the life expectancy of, uh?
Um, for our, our run volume, even if it, if we double again, uh, according to manufacturer. Uh, we are looking at at least ten to twelve years out of this unit, uh, because it's, again, it's so overdesigned, it's, it's heavy duty.
Okay.
It's.
Because it would be in a five fifty, is it, how much heavier is it compared to your one ton?
Uh, it is about seven thousand pounds heavier than, than the one-ton unit. Uh, which, I mean, that, that's its own issue, but we were more concerned about ground clearance and stuff than we were the weight. Um, because we've had many times where we've had, we've bottomed out, you know, crossing drive forwards and stuff. Uh, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't do that with the new one, so.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
All right, so this would be, uh. Twenty twenty-five contract for supplemental distribution for equipment purchase with Manchester Township Volunteer Fire and Rescue Incorporated.
Uh, Kevin, motion to approve the twenty twenty-five contract for sup- supplemental distribution for Manchester. Uh, fire and EMS, uh, for an equipment purchase of us, as presented by Mr. Boden Dussel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. You got your ambulance.
Thank you, sir.
You want to tell us just a little, so that maybe the, the press here understands what that EMS Lit has done for Manchester?
I would ha- be happy to. Uh, in Manchester, the, I, I really can barely even begin to describe the benefits. Of the LIT for the last, over the last two years for us, a- as a small department. Um, we have been increasing our run volume for years, but, uh, we struggled to keep volunteers. We started paying small stipends per run, and it would get the people who, the members. Who lived within Manchester Township, they would, they would respond. But we were missing almost sixty percent of our calls by the time twenty twenty-four came around because of the increased call volumes. Um, so with the additional lit money, it allowed us to start attracting people for, that don't live in Manchester Township. Manchester Township has roughly thirty-five hundred residences. It's not a large pool to. Drag, draw from for EMS personnel, because it takes a certain kind of person who's willing to do that work. Um, so this money allowed us to start bringing people to work for us within the township. And I'm, I'm very proud to say that by the time we started twenty twenty-five, we're, we're up to a hundred percent. As far as making our run calls, um, we're getting two ambulances out sometimes now at the same time. Um, we just moved to provide advanced medical care, so we have full-time advanced EMTs. We have part-time medical, uh, personnel on board, paramedics on board. Um, we've been able to do some intercepts with Moore's Hill and some other organizations. And none of that could have happened without the LIT money that was presented to us this, this year for sure. Um, we look forward to continue to grow, to serve our community the best way we can and. Appreciate all the support that we've had over the last couple of years with prime counsel and commissioners. It's really done wonderful things for the entire county, not just us, but.
You've done a great job. I thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I, I'm good, right?
Thanks, thank you for what you do.
Yep.
Yes, absolutely.
Want us to come in and sign with.
Andy, can he sign this and we attest it?
Uh, it's kind of, I, I was gonna have him and his secretary come in together one day and sign it.
You can come in my office, can they come in my office?
Okay, I'll do, I'll get with him.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, so I also have the, we, we spoke about this last time, I think last meeting, and council did approve these yesterday. The amendments and agreements for nine-one-one dispatch. Uh, it would be amendments with the three cities and with West Harrison because they had existing one, or three-year agreements. So those will be extended out through twenty twenty-seven, uh, with the thirty percent reduction that you had previously approved. Um, those three in West Harrison had already paid for this year, so their thirty percent reduction for twenty-five will be credited. For their future payments. Uh, Lawrenceburg and Greendale are just taking, and West Harrison are just taking their full credit next year. Aurora did ask that their credit be spread out between twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, Moore's Hill has approved, and they only had a one-year agreement, so they've approved a new agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven at the reduced rate. Uh, Saint Leon, I guess, was asking about it, and I did send that to their attorney this morning, and Dillsborough did send in a payment. And indicated that they were only willing to do a one-year, so for twenty twenty-five at this time. And they, they, like I said, they did send in that payment. Council approved all these last night. Um, obviously, it was disheartening that. Dillsborough still is only willing to do a one-year agreement, but I think council and, uh, madam president is here, but I think council didn't want to hold these up. Because of that, and they did vote to go ahead and approve all of them, so, um, I know Aurora's approved theirs. And, um. Moore's Hill has approved theirs, I think I said. Um, the other cities and stuff are coming up, and I spoke with Wes Harrison's attorney, and she didn't think it was being assumed. Wes Harrison had never, but they, they signed theirs really easy and always paid on time, so. So they're, they'll probably just be happy to get a reduction they didn't even ask for.
Okay.
So I'd ask to, uh, approve the amendments and the agreements for nine-one-one dispatch as presented. And those are all here, there are seven of them, so don't run off.
Okay, all right, got to sign all those, uh, doing, motion to approve the nine-one-one supplement, uh. For, uh, nine-one-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Boden?
That's what I got.
Yeah, commissioner comments, uh, Kevin, you have anything?
Nothing.
Definitely.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I have, just to add on to Kevin, is, uh, when he talked about how the EMS Lit had dramatically. It improved the, the service that they provide in Manchester, but that really is going all across the different squads. They are all up. To ninety-five percent or better right now, so that is just great news from where we were to where we are today. So, uh, that lit is working and working the way it was supposed to, so. I appreciate all the work that, uh, people like Kevin do, because it's, that is, that is a job, so. Okay, uh, so late arrival information. Okay, hearing none? Is there any, uh, public comment? Okay, then my favorite part, motion to adjourn, Kevin?
Move to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Me new adjourned.